You're listening to the Public Sector Show by Tech Tables, a podcast dedicated to sharing human-centric stories from CIOs and technology leaders across city, county, state, and federal agencies, joining in a conversation and touching the hearts and minds of leaders across technology today. From mission-driven leadership to cloud, AI to cybersecurity, workforce challenges, and more, never miss insights from peers and vendor partners across the public sector. And to make sure you never miss an episode, head over to techtables.com and drop your email to subscribe. New podcast episodes come out every Tuesday and Thursday, along with weekly behind-the-mic newsletter. And one of today's podcast sponsors is Tech Tables Plus, an engaging new community where you can have early access to never-before-released episodes, early access to live event recordings, early access to weekly three interesting learnings, early access to live event ticket purchases, no-episode ads, and more, plus three extra special bonuses when you sign up today. Bonus number one, access to the CEO show. Bonus number two, access to the higher-ed show. And bonus number three, access to the digital show. Join Tech Tables Plus today. As always, thank you for supporting the Tech Tables Network. Today's episode is titled, Bringing Greater Accountability to Government Work with Paraluiji Oliverio, former council member, City of San Jose, and Planning Commissioner, currently for the City of San Jose. Paraluiji, welcome to Tech Tables.
Hey, Joe. Great to be here.
Super excited. Love catching up with you backstage. And I'm just gonna give a shout out to Carolyn Stats at Sonoma County for introducing us. She said, this is her comment, Paraluiji's interesting role in politics in a very large city in California, as well as his private sector background in tech with Adobe seems to be a great combination for Tech Tables. So for those of you, and I'm referring to the audience, but who don't know who you are, could you maybe give us some context on what your previous life was like as a council member and kind of your current life right now for the Planning Commissioner at the City of San Jose?
Sure. Well, thanks again, Joe, and special thanks to Carolyn Stats for connecting us. She's a great example of private sector experience and government service. I believe she's going to be on your show upcoming here. I've enjoyed a career in information technology. However, my path deviated when I ran for city council in San Jose. I had no traditional endorsements, but ultimately I ended up being elected to three consecutive terms with a winning average of 74%. Due to term limits, though, I returned to the private sector full-time. I'm still involved in my community, serving on nonprofit boards, and also currently chair the City of San Jose Planning. This is where I've been appointed and reappointed by the city council. The roles of council member and commissioner are similar but different. The Planning Commission has a narrow focus dealing with land use and implementing the official general plan for this city, which is like new housing, jobs, et cetera. And the council member position instead affects all areas of municipal government.
No, that's great. So I'm a little curious, what were some of your favorite parts of when you were a council member in San Jose? What were some of your favorite parts of like why you wanted to do that job? What got you excited about that role? If you could just maybe just take us back for a quick second and just rewind your life for a couple of years?
No, I was, I'm a native of where I grew up. My parents immigrated from Europe, and then I found myself born in this area and raised in San Jose. And I always thought San Jose could simply be better. I think every municipality across the country wants to achieve greatness, wants to be a better city. And I thought the leadership that we had prior was just really not necessarily doing the best long-term things for the city. So I just wanted the city that I reside in to be the best it can be. And I, one aspect of the job I really enjoyed was personally answering every email from every constituent. So firsthand, beforehand, before I put it into the CRM I established, was to make sure there was that personal, immediate responsiveness with the constituent to listen, to understand, and then follow up if necessary and/or educate them about what local government does.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Now, you said every municipality wants to achieve greatness. Are you a sports fan? Because that's typically how sports people talk.
I'm a sports fan, but not an avid sports fan. I love the economic development and the community spirit sports brings, but I won't leverage my paycheck to go to every game.
That's fair. That's fair. I only ask because I'm a huge Golden State Warriors fan. I love me the Golden State Warriors.
I join you, maybe to not the same level, but I join you. It's been a dynasty.
Yeah. Fun fact, I actually used to work in San Jose half the time near the airport. So with those offices that are right next, I had spent, I think, almost like maybe almost a year, I would go travel back and forth between San Jose and Santa Barbara. I wouldn't say I was a San Jose resident, but I spent my fair share in hotel rooms in San Jose.
You worked over at Microcade and some of those other tech companies?
It's that, where is it? It's near the Matrix where they've got that like casino restaurants.
The east of the airport.
Yeah. So that was my San Jose experience, oftentimes in a conference room for long hours. But when I got out, we would go to the Matrix. That's what I remember. So, and the Starbucks around the corner. Yeah. Look, I want to dive in. You wrote this article in the Mercury News, which I thought actually was absolutely fantastic. I'm going to read this. I know you wrote it, so you're gonna, don't get bored on me. But the Mercury News, that you published this at the end of 2021, in the opinion section, and it was titled, "Technology Brings Accountability, Transparency to Government Work." I think with the sub-headline was, "Cities and Counties Suffer from Siloed Data as Each Department Manages Work Their Own Way." My first thought, by the way, is this is why I think you and Caroline really connected, because I think she's championing this, don't be siloed work environment. It's not benefiting anybody. I can see why the two of you connected really well over that. I'm going to read this just for the audience, and so I think most people will end up listening to this. In the show notes, I will then link to the article if anyone else wants to go find it, but I'm going to take a portion of this. So he says, "Based on firsthand experience, I found that the private sector adopts technology faster than the government. The private sector is inherently motivated to be efficient, saving money, and enabling positive customer experiences. When I first started working in municipal government in 2007, I was shocked to find there was no customer relationship CRM software being utilized to manage the needs of constituents." This is what you were talking about at the beginning. "Instead, I encountered time-consuming, error-prone manual processes coming from the private sector. I use CRM daily to enhance customer success and believe the same would be done for constituents. As I implemented CRM to enable responsive government for the things such as potholes, streetlights, graffiti, and overall constituent assistance, not only did we provide thousands of great constituent experiences, but we were able to measure the success by tracking data. Recently, I watched a San Jose, and recently, we're talking, this is 2001, I watched a San Jose City Council meeting. 2021, sorry, 2020. I'll go all the way back to 2001. Yeah, 2021. We're not that old. I recently watched a San Jose City Council meeting where management presented the quarterly city roadmap. That contains goals established by council and the work that goes behind the scenes to achieve success. In government, the elected body provides direction, but it is the staff that does the actual work. Several questions were asked by council members, but when government entities use manual methods with static data, it is nearly impossible to answer questions in real time. This hits home on a number of levels for me. Furthermore, waiting three months to know if a goal had been missed is problematic and costly, such as when a grant application deadline is missed. Cities and counties suffer from siloed data as each department manages work, and this is work, in quotes, their own way. Policy work requiring collaboration across multiple departments brings further confusion on how to best manage and accomplish work. And now, 86% of state CIOs believe work from home is the new normal." Oh, this is the new normal. I know a number of state CIOs who live in different states. This is, this is a great, this is a great, is a new normal, which adds additional challenges in completing collaborative tasks. Just ask anyone who recently applied for a permit through the planning department. This disconnect leads to an also common scenario in which elected officials ask a city manager or county executive about when something will be completed. At this point, the answer is typically, I don't know. Let me get back to you. What transpires next is that management creates an unnecessary fire drill for staff six layers deep to provide a timely answer to the elected officials. Skipping down to the conclusion, work management software can unleash efficiency, productivity, and cost savings. However, it requires leadership. And in our notes, I actually highlighted and in red, it requires leadership. This is a really deep discussion. By the way, I think on, there's a lack of leadership going across the country where I feel like we can make the right call with better leadership. I always think that's the solution. You finish up by saying, widely adopted by corporations, such systems have been proven successful by governments outside Silicon Valley. As voters and taxpayers, we should demand local utilization so governments can be both accountable and transparent, and constituents can rest assured that our tax revenues are being used effectively and efficiently. This is absolutely fantastic. Actually loved this article. And as I was reading it, actually Caroline texted me the article too. So I was search, I was Google searching you, prepping for this podcast, and she's texting me the same article. It's pretty funny. So we've got a two-part question for you. So, and we'll just start with part one, then we'll go to part two. So, part one, accountability requires leadership that seems to be lacking across the public sector. The audience, I think, would love to hear what ideas you have for governments to build a culture of accountability and transparency, so that the citizens will better understand that their tax dollars or the tax revenue base are being used effectively and efficiently.
Joe, thanks. I really appreciate the kind words and your appreciation of the article. I actually just authored another article for the same newspaper that was about the integrity and vulnerability of government documents and the growing threat of misinformation. If that is of interest, we can discuss that another time. But back to the question, I think many, if not all, government entities have strategic plans, work plans, and other static documents that state these high-level goals that are broad and sometimes vague. And these documents serve as a reminder of what work should be done, but in my opinion, not enough structure of what must be done by when to accomplish the goal. Typically, I've experienced lots of last-minute updating of these documents by staff when you have the next check-in, whether it's at the committee level or the elected body as a whole. And this manual process generates so many unnecessary meetings. No one says, I look forward to going to more meetings. And the manual process is what that creates. And without the direction, it's easy to get off track. And as mentioned several times, the siloed data, especially when you have work that must be done by multiple departments, collaborative work, because each department wants to do it their own way. And you don't have the ability in a manual environment to foresee when a particular staff member is drowning and falling behind. So like any private or public organizations, we have star players. However, if we load too much upon them, it may drive them to quit. And when they quit, we lose their institutional knowledge with the manual process. So I think alternatively, by government entities adopting work management solutions, it really ensures accountability and transparency. So I think we would all recognize that many people are disillusioned with government for a variety of reasons, and with that, their trust in government. So city and county governments have this unique opportunity due to their local presence to build confidence with residents about what government's about and what government entity is trying to achieve. So residents may differ on a policy direction. However, they have their say when they have their elected, their vote, their elected representatives, and they can certainly share their thoughts with that elected representative during the term. But I'm really of the viewpoint that only by leveraging this technology can it allow for accountability and transparency at scale. Government can do little things of transparency and accountability, bite-size more. But if you really want transformation at scale, then it really requires adopting this type of technology. And whether you're doing it for a large department, the enterprise internal, the enterprise plus access for the elected officials, or maybe you want to share portions of this with constituents, so that the constituents understand what's being done. I think that's, that would come about with this technology.
Yeah. So I love the workforce, the workforce piece. Could you maybe touch upon too, like the value of asynchronous work? And you talked about being bogged down in meetings and things like that. What are you seeing right now? Has, like with the onset of COVID, have you seen more meetings? Have you seen this combination of being able to move to a more asynchronous model where you can still have those very important meetings that you need to have? In-persons can be totally great, but still being able to work asynchronously, send a Loom video, or a training, or some type of thing where it doesn't require a constant meeting, or you can just over Slack or Teams or whatever. But kind of in the mix with the workforce management piece, if you could just maybe touch on maybe the value of asynchronous work alongside that?
Yeah, I think the pandemic pushed the adoption of technology, not a newsflash. We've had things like electronic signature had been approved since the Bill Clinton administration. And that was the first time that government entities said, gee, I don't have to go, I don't have to sign paper to pen anymore. And whether it was web-based meetings, et cetera. The good thing of the pandemic is it forced government to adopt some technologies. I think some in government think, that's enough. My life is so radically different now that I can do a web meeting, or that I have a tool like Microsoft Teams or Slack, that I don't need any more adoption of technology, because this is such a huge growth of what I, of capabilities that I never expected. But those are good, if you really want to achieve asynchronous work, where everyone knows at any given day what they're working on, and that the organization can view that work and understand at what state is it in. Are we on target? Are we behind? Are certain, so has got COVID, they're going to be out for two weeks or a week. We need to slot another analyst in for that. What's the impact if I remove an analyst from that other project to this project? So being able to understand the ripple effect of when changes are made, you can't do it manually. I know people will, oh, we use email effectively, we use calendaring effectively, we share a document, but it's just simply not the same as when you have visual ability to understand, here's the project, here are the milestones, these are the tasks. The tasks for government may be legal analysis, policy analysis, constituent outreach, and who has those responsibilities and who's working on those things? That's the benefit you get from work management. One of.
Yeah, no, I love that. One of the tools, this is the, this is the small business owner in me, is, is I'll use Asana, for example, for, which I know is like very small, I'm like a very, like two-person company. But Asana, same thing. And even now, I'm always so shocked at the level of automation that you can have happen, and then take that automation and basically filter it into a dashboard, where you can see in real time, very quickly, hey, here's what's going on, here are the people who are released, in my case, or who's on deck, and this is what I have going on. But same thing, a lot of businesses, being able to automatically take all these inputs, make sense of the data, and then visually display it. Now, did you have a TV up with, hey, this is like our number one KPI, or this is what we're focused towards, like some type of dashboard? Did you have that? Or was it just like more of just, hey, we've got a web app login, and these are the, these are the metrics that we're tracking for success? Love to hear how you're, you go about and look at that.
I think, I think government entities have had, most have had some measurement of how are you achieving things? And they produce a document. I remember long ago, City of Palo Alto had put together a cute little, short abbreviated document saying achievements. And it was easy to understand, but it's, it's really not saying what is being worked on now. Where, how are the resources from the government entity being allocated to do things? And I think that's where work management, being the fact that it's object-oriented database typically, is that anything that gets done is measurable, and then can be shared on a dashboard. And that dashboard can be internal, it can be an external, can be for some segment of projects or all projects, that type of thing. So I think ultimately you need, sorry, my laptop's unplugged. Ultimately, the capability that comes is rich. You see the benefits yourself about keeping you organized in a, even if a small entity is yourself versus a city that has 10,000 employees or something like that. Ultimately, these, this is the way, as I said earlier, this is the, I only see technology as a way of scaling. No one was going to scale the library card catalog for speed, right? Even if you had marathon runners or sprint runners in there, nothing was going to beat the efficiency of new technology in a lookup of a book versus chasing it down.
Yeah, that's a great example, especially, yeah, as you scale and you've got tens of thousands or often millions of inputs, only through automation are you going to be able to get that data in, make sense of it very quickly. So part two of this question was, let's say government A has the right leadership in place. Because I think it starts at the top. If you don't have the right leadership in place, you're just not going to be able to get the right stuff done. So you got to have the right leadership in place. But let's just say you've got the right leadership in place, and you decide, hey, you know, we're going to take on massive amounts of accountability, and I'm big into that. I think part of that might be, you might be able to see, I've got the military books. I'm a huge Jaco fan, so I've got the discipline, plus freedom, extreme ownership, dichotomy, leadership strategy and tactics. So big on accountability, big on humility. And so let's just say we've got the right leader in the place. How does the leadership team get started to move at the speed of the private sector?
I think it started with a matter of willingness, initiative, and a clear-eyed perspective of what the current state is and what the future state could be. Change management's at the core of adopting this type of technology and understanding how work will be vastly different. And with that difference, though, you're going to get a more focused and satisfied workforce who knows exactly what to work on, even if all distractions. And some of these work surveys, they say upwards of 50% of someone's day is doing tasks unrelated to their job. And so by keeping them focused, focused is key to the organizational goals. So if, on the other hand, the culture is more like, I prefer that the work of staff have a curtain around it or be in the dark, because I want this ability to make changes or edits prior to its exposure to elected officials or something like that, then that's probably not the leadership that's going to be needed to do this. I think there's a matter of control that I think a county executive or a city manager is concerned about the elected officials interfering with staff work. But elected officials are not allowed to do that. They can certainly ask questions and this and that, but they don't report to the elected official. It's a sort of a chief operating officer form of government. You have your elected board, and then the CEO or city manager has the city staff that reports to them, and they control their work. They're their boss. Now, of course, that staff has their daily work for their role, but they're also implementing the policy objectives of the elected board. And so at the end of the day, you can, you can do it as they've been doing it for decades, outside of email and calendaring and having a web meeting. Or you can really use the technology to understand where we are at any given minute of the day with the project.
Yeah. No, I love that. There's a gal, her name is Shawna Rogers. She is the, oh, I'm blanking. This is why after the podcast, I'll edit it. I'm blanking on her title. She's at the Texas Attorney General's Office, and she's fantastic. She worked at JP Morgan Chase in their technology division. And, and she, she was used to shipping software daily, like every single day. And so when she came over, and then her boss is this gal Tina, and she's, hey, she's recruiting her. She's, no, I don't think you understand, like, I ship daily. And she's, I need this on my team. I need the people on the team to be, to be exposed that we're going to ship daily, and this is, we're going to move at this speed. So she brought her in and just radically transformed. And she actually has a fantastic story. I want to say it's episode 107 on Tech Tables.
101.
Around child support payments, how they were able to automate, and how they were able to fix a lot of stuff that was broken. And I think it was like to be a tune of maybe five billion. It was like full crisis mode. She came in right at the start of COVID, and it just, stuff was broken, and she was able to move very quickly, going back to just getting the right people and the right leadership in place. She was able to move at that speed. And so that was a great story. Yeah. So that's, that was with Krishna Etul and Shawna Rogers. I think it's 107, it's a fantastic episode. So what I've read online, just about you, and you've put out quite a lot of, quite a content, a lot of content. But what I've read is you seem to bring this very data-driven approach, just of how you look the world, like through the lens of the world, like, these are the facts, which I think is very helpful. I think it's missing in today's world. I took like an executive, it was like a Harvard Business School program or something like virtual, and I took this like, basically as a stats course. And, and it was really great, because they would present, this is the data, this is how people manipulate the data, this is how newspapers get the data wrong. And, and I thought it was just, anyways, ever since I took that class, it just brought me back to my early days in college, where I was like, wow, okay, now I'm looking at everything. I'm trying to look at the data behind it. Did they scale it? What does it look like? And I think that approach is missing a little bit. But with the data-driven approach that you bring to problem-solving and finding solutions, how does one remove the politics from the policymaking in order to get what's the best policy for constituents? And I know that might be a little bit outside of your realm, but just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
No, I think if you make ease of access to data, it can lead to greater civic transparency and participation, and awareness at a time when people are disengaged from politics. In my experience, constituents enjoy empowerment that comes from having data and information, such as to be able to see if an issue they reported was resolved or on its way to being resolved, or a government utility sharing real-time data of usage. People get fascinated. Oh, that's when my water usage, my electric, electrical usage, et cetera. So I think that's important. And I also think the data provides cover, cover from politics, so that the conversation and the decision can be grounded by data. But in today's world, it doesn't make a difference how much data you have. Some individuals will not be, thus, like algebra, you need to be able to show your work. And the ability to visually convey the process as well as the timeline and who did what can be really powerful. And the only way, I believe, to do that effectively and efficiently and at scale is with these work management solutions.
Yeah, that's, that, that is fantastic. The part where people will never believe, even if you put it, bring the data in front of them, that's really funny. So I, one of the things I do is I coach high school basketball, and we've got some kids who their parents always believe that they should be in the starting lineup, or that they should get more playing time. And every season, we've got tape, right? So there's cameras everywhere, and you record. And so the facts are, your son had seven turnovers and played two minutes. And so you start laying it out, but some, sometimes the reality, as kindly as you put it, they're not going to leave the bench unless they can show in practice that they're going to get better and execute for the team. And I got to put it in a loving way, but it's the parent, and I'm a parent, but some parents are just, do not want to believe that, that their baby child is, is sitting on the bench. And when we kind of have a process, we walk them through, but one of them is showing them the tape, but even then, I still got a crack up of how, I'm like, we just showed you seven turnovers, seven turnovers right here. You don't see that? Anyways, that's how I feel sometimes.
But by sharing data in the government circumstance or in the basketball, youth basketball, a larger audiences by using data, you'll garner the support of the majority, not everyone. But just saying an opinion, people, oh, I don't know if Joe's the best coach. Does he really know about my sons? I don't know, whatever the situation is. But yeah, data is crucial.
Yeah. No, it definitely happens where they're like, I don't really like this guy. And they're like, the other parents, we've got four years of track record, and all the varsity team loves him. So varsity coach likes him. Sorry, he's not going anyway. So yeah, that's how, that's how that goes. So on our intro call, you had mentioned the ability to understand the direct benefit technology can play in constituent lives, and also how it benefit the professional staff, and so that they can do the right things. There's a mission-driven purpose for most government entities, and I believe like they've got a great heart for that. And at the end of the day, you had said, you're not concerned if it's a left or a right idea, which I really liked. But if it's a policy objective to be achieved, then the organization needs to move towards achieving that, and having the accountability of knowing where everything is really important. You touched upon this earlier, but how are you educating public sector teams today to understand the direct benefit technology can play in constituent?
I concur with my prior statement that I shared with you, that we can't be consumed on the political ideology of the decisions. Staff, professional staff, once the elected body has rendered their decision, whether it's a policy or budget, regardless of what the staff, it's the work of the professional staff to implement it through the city manager or the county executive. And so I've seen where staff doesn't agree with the position that the elected body takes, and so they stall the work, it misses deadlines. And that's what happens with that work management system, because you don't know, you can't foresee these delays. And I think also, if the policy is flawed, and it's a terrible policy, then the work will show that. But you have to document the work showing that the policy has issues. And again, you get that through the structure. The other thing that occurs with elected bodies is that on any given Tuesday, that's when most government entities meet, they can shift and change priorities. And it's a pet peeve of the staff, right? Okay, we got the new issue of the day. But the problem is, it is unknown to the elected official, nor the management, and even the department heads, et cetera, that if there's this new priority, and it's become so important, what effect does it have on the rest of the projects we're working on? I said something like to the extent earlier of a ripple effect, right? So now that this is the most important thing, now Project A is six weeks late, Project B is 12 weeks late, and Project C is further tardy. So I think, again, those, this ability to show that, and also having this understanding of how do you deploy staff, right? Because by moving staff to something else and redeploying them, it has an effect. And I think those are critically important.
Yeah, no, that was really great. I like what you said about, again, about the ripple effect and the shift and change of priorities. I imagine there has to be this switching drag on workload, just from a lack of mental focus of trying to actually, I, in my own small business, so hard, you're driving towards this one goal or this one target. And if you're constantly switching, you'll never be able to achieve the goal, or never be able to achieve the target. And I imagine it's very similar when you can't align around one, whatever, some people might call it a KPI, or whatever, OKR. You can't align towards this one and say, hey, we want to go towards this. When we finish it, then we've got this bucket over here that we can go analyze and say, all right, we've got 20 things over here. Now we can go prioritize what is the next one. But if you're getting 30% done through 20 projects, you're going to have zero progress.
Now, some government entities will tout success in that the, they will convince the city council to rank their priority, which is helpful, but it still has no accountability between that. which is helpful, but it still has no accountability between that meeting and the next meeting when you look at how the priorities are done, because it's a big vacuum, a big void. And you don't have an understanding of, we, so I've reprioritized, but what's happened?
Yeah, no, that, that is really great insight. So I want to move to the Q and A session. Don't think Carolyn's going to be able to make it, but she had a great question. And so she says, having worked in the government sector and in the software industry, what technologies do you feel are most important for government, governments to utilize or fully utilize to have the most impact on achieving the stated goals of transparent government?
Let's see here. So I think there's more than one system. I think as meant, as we started at the beginning of the conversation, I think CRM is important to understand the needs and desires and wants of constituents and to track, are we accomplishing what they wanted us to go fix or help them? It might be seeking benefits in the county government. It might be fixing a pothole with municipal government. I think as we've had our discussion here on work management, work management can help you implement your IT projects because it's keeping everyone focused. And obviously it's throughout the whole body of work, whether it's a capital improvement program or it's just the policy work that must be done every day. I think those are important. I think as we talked about, what did the pandemic do? This ability to have web meetings is critical. You're not going to have everyone in the building anymore. Each entity is going to figure out how that works for them. Prior to the pandemic in the Bay Area, we were considering a multi-billion dollar tax increase for transportation. And that was going to improve traffic by 5%. It was very small. With work from home, you've improved traffic flow considerably. So if we're really hardcore environmentalists, then allowing people to work remotely some portion of the week or whatever ends up being is, that has much more improvement than multi-billion dollars in taxes increases.
This is a fascinating topic. Let's take a second. And the reason why I think it's a fascinating topic is why do you think there was such resistance to work from home prior to the pandemic? Skype had been around forever. You could have, you could run a remote business. This wasn't, I was using Skype in high school, eighteen years ago, whatever. So in college. So like you could, you, why do you think there was such, especially this is great, like we've got this policy where we think, hey, let's go tax everybody. Or what if we just let some people work home half the week? And what if we just weigh both of the options and say, hey, what do, what do the people want more? Like, why do you think that's such a struggle to ask, like the question of how else could we get this done? I'd love to hear your thoughts. This is my own Q and A. Look, I just jumped into my own Q and A right now.
Yeah, I think there was just a lack of trust that they'd get a full day's work out of somebody. And that unsupervised, maybe they'd watch television or goof off or do something. But I think we found, at least in private sector, if you're not achieving what you're supposed to achieve and if you are goofing off, eventually you'll get terminated. And I know there's been some crazy stuff that people have done, working from home, that has led to termination. But in the end, I think if there's a mission to work and you provide direction, especially with work, workforce management. And another key concept to this is in the remote environment, how do you make sure that your workforce is accountable? One, in one instance at Adobe, one of our clients had all their auditors, government auditors start using the solution. And lo and behold, down the road, they were doing more work per individual than they had ever done before when then they were in the office, because they were more efficient. And the department didn't add headcount because through attrition, they continued to exceed and do more. So inevitably, I think the pandemic again has shown some level of trust. I think it's, it's key for us to remember in government though, as far as a business friendly environment, that just because you can do your job in Boise, you could also do it in Bangalore. And so I think governments reliance on corporations for a tax space, those economic development team members need to nurture and make sure those government entities are happy and that we continue to have a tax base in our communities to pay for our government services.
Yeah, that's, that's fantastic. There is, you're a really smart guy. There's a lot we could go cover. You, you had a lot of very interesting posts and I like sometimes how you'll just post, as I was going back through your feed on LinkedIn of this is the data and you just leave it there. You gotta just leave it for people to make a decision. And then I just went through the comments. I thought the comments are hilarious. There's one that had 178 comments. And I'm like, I don't even know if this person actually read what the data was up there.
Yeah, that's always, yeah, it's not everyone reads what's written or an article, but they'll read the comments. But yeah, sometimes I'll just do posts that are data. I don't have to share an opinion. You can make of it what you wish. But I think you also asked me like, how are we trying to let government entities know? And it's always been my goal to raise awareness of existing and emerging challenges and vulnerabilities and how technology can alleviate or solve them. Ultimately, of course, it's this matter of prioritization for the organization, what is most important? And when, you know, life can be different, if that becomes a priority, then you know, the technology is available to assist them.
Yeah, yeah, I love that. Thank you for coming on Tech Tables. Really appreciate the time. And I know a number of folks will, will love this.
Thanks, Joe. I really had a great time. Look forward to sharing more about what you're doing here. I think it's a great service and I appreciate it. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you. Once I hit, as I learned on the other previous live streams, once I hit live stream, it's over. So, okay, thank you for jumping on and I'm going to shoot, I'm going to shoot Caroline a text and let her know that this was a great episode.
Thanks so much, Joe. All the best. Have a great day and have a good time in Disneyland.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Bye.
You're listening to the Public Sector Show by Tech Tables. A podcast dedicated to sharing human centric stories from CIOs and technology leaders across the city, county, state and federal agencies, joining in the conversation and touching the hearts and minds of leaders across technology today. From mission driven leadership to cloud, AI to cybersecurity, workforce challenges and more. Never miss insights from peers and vendor partners across the public sector. And to make sure you never miss an episode, head over to techtables.com and drop your email to subscribe. New podcast episodes come out every Tuesday and Thursday, along with weekly behind the mic newsletter. And one of today's podcast sponsors is Tech Tables Plus, an engaging new community where you can have early access to never before released episodes, early access to live event recordings, early access to weekly three interesting learnings, early access to live event ticket purchases, no episode ads and more, plus three extra special bonuses when you sign up today. Bonus number one, access to the CEO show. Bonus number two, access to the higher ed show. And bonus number three, access to the digital show. Join Tech Tables Plus today. As always, thank you for supporting the Tech Tables Network.